We call the meeting to order. I invite you to join me in the invocation. Dear Lord, we come to you in prayer this evening to show our gratitude for all you have given to us. We are thankful today for so many gifts. We are thankful for our family. We are thankful for our friends, our community, our church, and our employees. We are thankful for our veterans who have given us the freedoms and this opportunity to voice our opinions. Lord, lead us in our decisions so we show concern and respect in all that we do. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Number two is a special presentation by Ms. Catherine Bennett. Is she here? She is.
Yes, I did hear her too.
She's to present a sign on the online exchange program.
Yep. Hello. My name is Catherine Bennett. Recently, I've been doing a project with all the policeman municipalities in Stanley County, and I wanted to set up online exchange zones. And the reason I did this is because I'm always on like Facebook market in Craig's List, and I beg my mom like, can I go and meet these people and get stuff? And she's like, I don't want them coming to my house. I don't want you meet them. So I decided that, okay, why don't I go? And I went to talk to Chief Smith in Oakboro, and he helped me get involved with every other police department. And I've created, I've designed my own signs, different for every police department. And now we have them set up basically everywhere in Stanley County, each police department.
What is an online exchange? What is an online exchange?
It's a place where people can meet, like if they wanted to buy something online, but they have to meet a person they've never met before, they can meet at these online exchange zones. Like the one in Oakboro is right in front of the police department. So it's a safe place so they don't get sexually assaulted, or mugged, or robbed, or scammed, anything like that.
Very good.
That's exactly it.
This one will go on the sign right in front of the police department, and then later when the police department moves, we'll move it to the new building.
Very good.
Just Bennett, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And this was your senior project, right?
No, it was just a community.
Just a community project.
Yeah, not even.
If you will stay here, we'll take a picture in just a few minutes if you want to.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and do the second presentation, then we'll take some pictures.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have a second special presentation. I'm gonna invite Ms. McGuire, teacher at East Albemarle Elementary, to come forward and announce this program. And then ask her to introduce all the students and have them come up here and sit in these chairs.
Excellent. Thank you. You always do us right, Mr. Mayor. I'm Kristin McGuire with East Albemarle Elementary, and this is our second annual event called Community Partnerships. And our prompt this year was, what makes a good leader? And our goal is to make sure that we are getting the community into our school and getting our students out into the community. And so we really appreciate you guys allowing our students to read tonight. They're winning essays. And so I'm gonna call up these students. We have six students with us tonight. One from kindergarten, Ms. Chloe Pittman. So have you come sit right in here for a minute? And Mr. Levi Pack, Dylan Neller, Brianna Martinez, Malia Brooks, and Isaiah Kennedy. So it's kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. And they are going to read their essays to you on what makes a good leader.
Pull the microphone a little closer to you, and we will be glad to hear you.
A leader is calm. A leader is respectful. A leader is kind. And a leader is in the age.
In the age. I love it.
A good leader is caring, respectful, and responsible. I am a good leader when I help people when they are hurt.
What makes a good leader? A leader must have many good character traits. Good leaders should be responsible, honest, and kind. Good leaders need to be responsible. Responsible leaders need to stay on task, not forget something important like going on a trip and packing at the very last minute. The responsible leader has to turn in their work on time. The responsible leaders need to be hardworking in school and at home. Responsible leaders have to be hardworking in school to improve. Responsible leaders also need to be hardworking at home to make their parents proud by cleaning the house.
My wife didn't hear that.
Good leaders need to be honest. Honest leaders always needs to tell the truth. If something bad happens, they have to admit what they did. An honest leader never lies to their people who follow them. If an honest leader lies to their followers, they will get in big trouble. Good leaders need to be kind. Kind leaders need to be respectful to their community. Kind leaders need to pick up trash if they see any on the ground. Kind leaders need to be nice to one another. A kind leader can have powerful words to cheer a person up and turn their day around.
What is a good leader? To be a good leader, you need to be respectful, honest, and positive. To be respectful, you have to treat others like you want to be treated. If you don't, no one will want to be your friend. To be positive, you have to believe in yourself and believe in others. To be honest, you have to tell people the truth, because if you don't, no one will believe you. I know someone that is honest, respectful, and positive. My teacher is honest, respectful, and positive to me. Those are three things to me that you should know how to be a good leader.
Hello, I am going to tell you what makes a good leader, and here we go. You have to be patient if you want to be a good leader, because you are only as fast as the slowest person on your team. When you are patient, everything works smoothly. You must be patient under pressure as well, because when you are yelling and screaming, everyone panics. That hurts your whole team and core group. So when you are a leader, you might want to remember. If you want to be a good leader, you need to be able to encourage others, so when they're stuck or down, you can cheer them on so they can do it. You are helping them in another way, too. You are building their self-esteem. And I think that is what leadership is about. You can do it, so step up, please. Being responsible is the key to being a great leader. Being responsible means doing something when you are asked. People will think of you and say, I wish you were my leader. You or she is kind, honest, and that person is overall great. So that will help you to be a good leader. And you might want to be respectful, too, while you are on your journey to being an amazing leader. All right, so you are almost at the end of your journey. So I'll tell you this. Just help, help with me, and just be yourself and lead people in the right direction. That is how to be a good leader. You got this.
We thank you all very much for coming and reading to us tonight, but we would like to come out and take a photo with you. If you're good with that, we're gonna, I'll come out there with you. Let's stand up. You stand right here in front of me. Stand behind you. We're gonna sit down once we have a little bit of conversation. Can't believe you made it. Thank you so much. Did you want a whole time? Consider approval of October 16th regular session, October 18th adjourned session, and October 18th closed session minutes.
No approval.
She left off the end sentence on what I said at the end of the thing. I'd like to reject that.
All right, tell her what to put on there.
I'll gain it to, I'll give it to her.
And what, what are we talking about?
We were talking about all of the arts groups, and I said, hopefully, we might give some support to them.
The arts groups.
This is very end sentence on that, but I.
So that's a motion with a correction by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Hall. Is that for which set are you making that motion on that correction needs to be made?
Our regular.
Regular session. And yours, but does your motion include all three?
Whatever.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. I don't know of any agenda adjustments, do you?
Not where I'm at.
Moving on to announced delegations. Number four, Ms. Christine Kendall, 602 Valley View Drive, to request child at play signs.
I live on 602 Valley View Drive, been living there for, going on 18 years. And the reason I am requesting for the, for signs on my road, on my street, is because my nine-year-old grandson lives with me. He has autism, is nonverbal, and is not danger conscious. He tends to walk to the road occasionally when he goes outside. And he goes on the road at times, even though we, me, his grandfather, and his uncle do our best to keep our eyes on him, to prevent him from doing this. He does not play in the road, he only walks. He usually walks on the front yard, which is close to the road, and/or goes to the backyard. Even though we do our best to keep eyes on him, he slips away within a minute's notice. We know he usually is nearby outside. Even if we do this, this does not guarantee his safety. We have neighbors across the street and next door who have seen him walking on the road, and at times, he has stepped on their property. The cliche that it takes a village to raise a child does not apply in my neighborhood. We, my household, are the responsible party, even though our neighbors are aware of my grandson's disorder. I am requesting signs in my neighborhood, street, as a means to ensure the safety and health of my grandson, to increase awareness of children being in the neighborhood, and to make those who drive on my street know that there are children or child who might be at play or walking on the street, in hopes they will be alert and watchful for children as they drive down 602 Valley View Drive. To my knowledge, there are other children in my neighborhood also. However, they do not have a disorder as my grandson, and they seem to be more safety conscious. Also, occasionally, my grandchildren visit my home on the weekend. We watch them closely when they are outside. A few neighbors have voiced their concerns to me, especially regarding my grandson. Therefore, I thought it very necessary to request a sign to be put on my road.
Ms. Kendall, exactly where are you requesting? Your street actually has two signs on it already.
That's why I just, I noticed that. But see, I'm right in the middle. Okay, there's a sign at the group home at the top. Come out Bethany. Coming off Collins, there's a group home, and there's a sign there, and then there's one at the bottom of the hill saying child at play. But I'm smack dab in the middle, kind of. So it may be I'm asking, you know, something that is not possible to do. But my grandson usually spent his time wandering right up in that area in, in the middle. And we've had new neighbors that have moved in, and I don't know whether people pay attention to signs, but it seems like they, some of them run down through there pretty fast. And I'm just afraid that my grandchild might not see it in time, or they may not see him in time. So I may be asking amiss. So I'm just asking, is there, is this a possibility of just maybe put watch out for child, watch out for, watch for children, I don't know.
Counsel, this is gonna be totally at your discretion. Your policy now says you will usually put it on the, one on, one on each direction on a street. She lives in the 600 block, there's one in the 500 block, and there's one in the 700 block. So it would totally, totally be up to counsel if you want to put more than one on there. Her policy right now says one, but if you want to change that, you have that discretion. If, if you do decide to do it, she would be responsible for paying the cost of the signs. You are familiar with that?
Yes, I understand. But maybe just, just one. Do you ever from child at play? I don't know whether there's such a sign as watch out for child, or watch out for children. But he's, he's nine years old, and he, he, with autism, he walks constantly. And even though we try to keep him in our view, sometimes he does wander off.
Counsel, what's your discussion?
I think this is a special situation, and I would move to approve Ms. Kendall's request.
A second.
A motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion.
I was just gonna ask the question, do we have any idea what the neighbors were thinking? You know, there's more than one person affected here about more signs on the street.
Ms. Kendall.
Can you answer that?
Yeah, the part where you said a few neighbors have voiced their concerns to me, especially regarding my grandson, was that basically to encourage you to come and try to get this up?
I came up with that myself. I told my neighbor across the street, 'cause she was, she said she had seen him, and she said at one point, a car had come by, and if, the car did stop, but my grandson, you know, kind of just.
So that was the sign.
And so she more or less said, I just told her that maybe I should get a sign that would, you know, maybe put more emphasis on this area right here where a child has autism and is known to kind of wander. And they, you know, nobody wants, maybe just bring to their attention that there's a child there.
Just back to the question, to the motion. You have originally asked for two, okay?
Mm-hmm.
And again, I think the motion is the signs, we are going to allow it, but I think the burden then comes to you, because you end up having to pay the cost of it. I think if you want to, I don't know, do we know what the cost of those are right off hand?
We do. If it's just a sign, if there's an existing pole, we can put it on. It's $57.88 per sign. So if the sign takes an entirely new pole to be set, then it's $71.88, and that just covers materials. So in this case, if we've got one either on the street, and I've not spoken to Ms. Kendall, but, you know, if we're trying to make sure it's specifically related to her grandson, because we have one either on the street, then maybe the best idea is, if there's not an existing pole in her yard, just to go ahead and set a pole and a sign that does, you know, is the $14 additional cost, but that covers, you know, make sure she's getting what she's looking for.
Right in front of her house.
Correct.
Yes.
Not two signs, just one sign.
Just one.
At least they would know that this is the place where you may see this child wandering.
Ms. Kendall, this is just, just a suggestion. I'm looking at online just to see if there was anything different, and I see some signs that you can basically purchase and stick in your yard, yep, the yellow and black caution signs that say like, slow autistic child at play. Let's see, autistic child area, they got different sayings for each sign, so I don't know if that's something you might want to consider as well.
I'll consider that then, instead of the.
All right, we will, who made the motion?
I did, Your Honor.
Will you amend your motion to approve that contingent if she comes back to us and requests us to move forward? That way, if she goes online and sees something she would rather have, she doesn't have to pay us.
Okay. Amend the motion to your contingency. If you find that, then you can come back to us.
Just to clarify, is that back to council, or is the council approving it if she comes back to, you know, she contacted Ms. Powell?
Comes back and stays.
Okay. So she doesn't have to come back to council.
Mr. Townsend, you good with a second?
I'm good.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Kendall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number five, presentation of the Niven Community Center Historical Marker.
That's it.
Ken, you don't have somebody come out here to hold that up for you?
No joke, do you want it?
Oh, I'm gonna lay it down on the table.
Your face is red.
We'll hold it up later.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know, I am Ken Ringler, and I am president of the Board of the Stanley County Historical Society. And I am here this evening on behalf of the Stanley County Museum Department of the Stanley County Library. And the mission tonight is to return an artifact that belongs with the building that is now the city's Niven Community Center. And this, this plaque comes from when the building was dedicated in 1959, and it is honor, it is in honor of Captain Jesse Franklin Niven, who was a 1937 graduate of Albemarle High School. And following his graduation from Davidson College, enlisted in, as an ROTC officer, went in as a second lieutenant in the Army, served with the 42nd, 47th Infantry, served in North Africa and Italy. And following the Normandy invasion, on July 20th, 1944, he was killed in action in the follow-up action to Normandy. And so it was determined when the Army Reserve built that facility that they would dedicate it to him as a local military hero, which he was. And when the facility was decommissioned in 2006, the picture of him and the metal marker, the brass marker, were placed with the Stanley County Museum for safekeeping. And in the intervening period of time, the portrait has been returned to the Niven Center. And now, after some discussions, it has been determined that the plaque should go back there also. So I am here this evening to turn that over to the appropriate people and allow that to go back to the Niven Center, so that that name can stay with that building and he will be remembered.
Thank you.
Very much, I believe that's the appropriate place for it.
I'd like to move that we accept.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett to accept the plaque.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Just leave it there, Ken.
I think they want to take a photo in just a minute, so let's all stand back out there again.
For any of you that want to see it, I'll hold it up, but.
I think you wanted to have a picture with your board, did you not?
Yes.
Can I bring your board up? We'll come out with you.
Several members of the Board of the.
I'll come help.
Yeah, let us, let us hold that for you.
I got it now. I got it now.
What are you thinking?
All right, if I lay it on the table?
Have Ms. Niven in school. Number six, presentation of United Way Campaign results.
Good evening. Hi. So we are really thrilled to come and announce the results of the city's United Way Campaign this year. We had a little bit to overcome. We had some really loyal givers retiring. We have quite a few people who are retiring this year. And so we wanted to at least get what we got last year. We didn't want to drop, and we ended up with some really generous people helping us get almost $500 over last year. So no decrease, but our total is $26,982 this year, which keeps us as the third largest campaign in the county. And so we're really grateful to you for the gift of the fair share days off, and some of you for giving, and really appreciate your continued support. And since pictures are the theme of the evening.
Could we get a picture with the giant check, please?
In just a minute.
Okay.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion that we give the committee a day off for what they have done in this campaign.
Specifically Lindsey and Anita?
That's the only two working on the campaign, correct?
Yes, I would, would so move.
Motion by Council, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, that's very kind. Are you doing a raffle? I understand you're doing a raffle. We did. You've already done the raffle. We did, yes. Dang it. Well, Lindsey, you were definitely, definitely stayed on top of people. She did. No, she really did. She really did stay on top of people.
I assume the position.
Shannon, the whole front page.
Number seven, your municipal calendar is in your agenda. Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. Number eight, ordinance seventeen thirty-three to establish regulations for the use of golf horts on public roads. Council has discussed this at multiple meetings. You have a proposed ordinance in your agenda. What's council wishes?
Motive approved.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion?
I'm gonna, let me just, I'm underwhelmed by the response to this, and, you know, I've probably given this thing more thought than I did most things. And, you know, while I don't think, I don't see a problem with them, you know, I didn't have a problem from the beginning, but it doesn't matter what I think, it's just that the response that I received was hardly anybody in favor, maybe one or two in favor. And I did hear from a number of, and granted, the sample was very small, but I did hear from a number of folks that, you know, highly value their opinions, and they were adamantly against it. So based on that information, I might have changed my vote, but, and that's solely based on the very limited number of people, I'm just not sure the times right now. And I kind of hate to change it, but, you know, I've got to have some criteria to base my decision on other than my personal opinion. So that's it.
Further discussion?
I will, you know, I, too, in all of my years, all of my years of public service, have tried to listen to my constituents. I listened to one particularly back in the summer, July fourth to be specific, and that's when the idea became before council, shortly thereafter, probably at the August meeting. I am, was not appalled, that word is too strong. I was very upset that though we talked about it in here, on air, it was in the paper, it was on the radio, we asked for a public hearing, that we had very few people come before council to speak for or against. That's what public hearings are for. Instead, most people went to this thing right here. And I was furious at some of the comments that came up on there insinuating that council was being ignorant in their thinking, or whatever it might be, because I take this job very seriously. I personally don't have a problem with it. I brought it to council's attention because somebody wanted me to do that. I, too, have had an outpour of folks, and I respect ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent of people, but I've had an outpour of folks come to me, come to me, call me, email me, again, see me at church, see me in the grocery store, who have said, "Please think this through." And I, too, will not be voting as it is proposed.
Further discussion?
With that said, before we take a vote, Your Honor, do we need to talk about the vote and how it will need to pass?
Not till we see what happens with the vote.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand, please. Those opposed? Motion fails five-two. Moving on to new business, or number nine, consider additional information and request for reconsideration of conditional use permit. Staff, can you come forward?
Mr. Mayor?
This is a continuation of the last meeting where we did not make a decision on whether to set a public hearing or not for the reconsider a conditional use permit. In order for council to reconsider a conditional use permit, there has to be substantial change from what we heard last time. Am I correct, Mr. Robinson?
Yes, but to the application, to what was presented previously.
Substantial change to the application. Council, you have to decide whether there was a substantial change and you want to set a public hearing or not. It's your choice.
And I have...
Any questions? Mr. Robinson is here.
And as much as that came to you, obviously, the first one we had was yes, no, yes, no, yes, yes, no, no.
Right, right.
In your mind, does this satisfy what the planning department would be looking for in terms of us moving forward to, move forward with this issue?
Well, the ordinance does not specifically state a substantial change to the project itself, it says a substantial change to the application, going from no, no, yes, yes, to a paragraph or so, excuse me, on each one, as well as pictures and a layout of the site and everything. I would, I think it's substantially more, more information was provided previously. So that's, that's my take on it.
So, Your Honor, do we need a motion, or to...
It'll be up to council.
To go forward, or if we don't do a motion?
If I don't hear a motion, it will die from lack of emotion.
What are our options?
Your options are to leave it as is and not have another public hearing, or you can, if you decide that there's substantial change in the application and want to reconsider it, you can set a public hearing and reconsider it.
Motion, question, question, Your Honor. As it is right now, we have, what is the deadline, Kevin, of the, of the close date on the original?
The original close date was, I believe, the twenty-fifth to the twenty-sixth.
Of?
Of October.
Okay.
And they were allowed, since they had an application in, application pending, they were allowed to remain open, so they're allowed to remain open at this time. And that would, you know, that all depends on basically what council decides to do at this point.
Though, though, at a meeting in October, we did not allow for further, for another six months, right?
That's correct. The first meeting in October, you heard the application, you, I say the original application, the second application, the re-application for this, and that was denied. There was not a whole lot of information on that application. It was basically just kind of yes, yes, no, there wasn't really any kind of in-depth discussion of that on there. Council reheard this at the next meeting, and staff, through staff's oversight, we didn't provide the application for you guys in time to really look at it, and so we're back here now.
Although we were, we were shown on screen that night the application.
That's correct, yeah.
Because if I, if I'm correct, and correct me if I'm not, because of the late timing of the application itself, it was not, we didn't get it in time to get it in here, is that correct?
Well, actually, the applicant had it to us in time. We thought we'd added it. It was staff's...
The staff's, okay.
The last meeting was staff's, was staff's oversight. I'm not getting that to you guys in time to review, and it is quite lengthy, there's about fifteen pages to it, so...
Mr. Mayor, I, I have felt from the beginning on this issue that we were sort of breaking ground or treading water or something. We just didn't have a good feel for what we were doing with this. I don't see anything wrong with giving them another six months.
But that's not what you're voting tonight.
Yeah.
The note tonight is nothing where to set a public hearing or not.
Just the only issue.
We set a public here for that reason.
Kevin, are you good on November twentieth? You want to move to the first meeting in December?
No, I think November twentieth would be good.
Okay, Mr. Bramlett, you're included in November twentieth in your motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, set a public hearing on November twentieth. Have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion?
No question, too. I know this is a little different than reconsideration of a motion, but last time, when the permit was denied, does this motion have to be from someone from the prevailing side then, like Roberts rules, or does this go strictly with anyone on council if they determine this is substantially different, can make the motion?
Good, that was a good...
Since it's substantial, I'm going to assume it does not matter, Mr. Robinson.
No, I don't, I don't think it matters, it's, it's, yeah, you have a new hearing.
Good for you, though, Chris.
Further discussion?
So in regards to Mr. Whitley's question, like the previous ordinance that we just voted down, I understand, like, if that would have passed, like, on a five to two vote, we would have had to have, like, a second hearing. Since this one failed at the last go-round, would we have to possibly, if the votes don't come out right, would we have to have, like, a second hea, first and second hearing on that one?
This is a, when we have the hearing, what council will be considering is the conditional use permit and each of the four or five findings of fact, and each one does have to be approved. Is there, Kevin, a supermajority level that has to be obtained? No, it's a supermajority on each, each one of those items, but each one of those items does have to be approved. I think it was only one item last time that was not approved. I think you might be right, I think it might have been a five to two vote.
Fake legislature removes supermajority, so there is no supermajority.
No, there's no supermajority, it's just a simple majority vote on each one of them, but each one of them has to pass.
That's the, that's the issue, each one of them has to pass.
Right, right.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries, six-one. We'll have a public hearing November the twentieth to consider any additional information, and council will review all the findings of facts at that time.
Thank you.
Number ten, new business, consider a change of scope for additional work associated with the landfill force main project. Darren, come forward.
I just continued to hear. Yeah. All right, I'd like to introduce you guys to Brent Lane, Brent's with HHNT. We've been working together roughly around ten years, and Brent's firm provides design operations consulting for our landfill, and they haven't steer us wrong thus far, and so the force main is one of their, their big projects they've designed for us, and so Brent's going to give you update on some, some items we would like to include in that project.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We certainly appreciate the relationship we have with Albemarle and Darren and Nina. They've been great to work with and just appreciate the leadership that y'all provide in that regard. Y'all should have received a package in the agenda that kind of detailed out what's, you know, some issues that were discovered at the, where they were discovered while working on the force main project. They're actually kind of outside the scope of the force main project, more related to the landfill's leachate containment system that's been existing for, let's see, roughly fifteen years or so? I mean, that's ballpark. So what we told you, or what I think was put together in your package, was we were still kind of pulling everything together to know kind of what would be proposed and what those, the costs would be for the repairs that are needed on that leachate containment system. So start with, if y'all want me to go ahead and kind of run through those costs about what we anticipate them being, we'll go through that with you.
Just go through all of them.
Okay. Well, the cost would be, the materials alone total up about eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. And then the contractor, of course, has not added labor and equipment and, of course, any profit or anything on top of that. Plus, the contractor's on-site already, so he doesn't have move or mobilization fees or anything like that that will go along with it. But in a nutshell, if the city had to go and hire somebody to do this work, you're probably looking at a twenty-five to thirty-thousand dollar cost to come in and make the repairs. All right, now, but what the contractor has said was, I'm not, he's, he's already behind on this project, and I think I was, I think it kind of laid out a little bit of that, or Michael did, in the explanation. So he's not so much worried about his cost, you know, he can, he can maybe get this done a lot cheaper than the city could if they were doing it without his help, and he knows that he needs days on the project. So essentially, what he is kind of asking us for is to swap out some extra days on the project in lieu of pay for the additional work he's going to perform.
How many days is he proposing?
He's asking for forty-four days.
Forty-four days.
Right.
Thousand dollars a day.
His, his contract ended, the contract time ended October the twelfth.
And where's he at on finishing?
Oh, he's not close.
What do you estimate it's going to take?
Sixty to ninety days. And that's, that's really entirely dependent on how much effort he puts on the project. And, you know, we've been pushing him and pushing him and pushing him, and he's told us over and over again, "I'm going to bring in extra crews, I'm going to bring in extra crews." They, he does have two crews working on it now, but at that rate, it's going to be a while.
So he's asking for forty-four days, which will get us to roughly Thanksgiving.
Forty-four days from, from October twelfth?
From October twelfth.
To get us to roughly Thanksgiving. He's still going to go over that.
He's going to go well over that.
He still understands that going over that, we're still going to look for damages?
That, we've, we've indicated nothing other than that.
Okay.
So that would just relieve him of forty-four days of penalties.
Right. And I'll tell you, we kind of looked at it, and in my mind, I thought about thirty days would be about right. And one thing is, by finding the issue that we found, there's a delay that he was out of his control just having that issue. The repair of that pipe that we discussed is really prohibited him from moving forward with that portion of the work. So there's part of that, that within a week or, you know, a week, ten days, two weeks delay that, that, you know, because that repair needs to be done, that's outside of his scope, has already delayed him. So I thought, well, we give him, you know, we give him three weeks or so, that gets you to thirty days. He's asked for forty-four. I'm thinking, hey, why don't we, why don't we meet in the middle and maybe go with thirty-seven days? That's, that'd be my recommendation.
I have no problem myself, and I'm not speaking for council, to give him the extra days and to do this work, because it is something that we're going to have to do one way or the other.
Right.
I, I just want to make sure that he understands that we're not forgiving him for all damages as we move forward.
The way this change would be written would only be, it extends the contract to that contract date that would be, or, you know, extends the contract day, so it would get him that, that amount of time. Wouldn't cover everything, but it would get him to that point only. There wouldn't be anything else in there about extending the contract further. So it would be, you know, pretty cut and dry.
On the road, where, where's he at? He started at both ends, correct?
Well, he, he started at the landfill. Now, he's, he's also started working, you know, at the other end, you know, where he ties into the city sewer and working back in that direction, but...
Close early to joining, Darren.
He's, he's got about eight thousand feet of pipe left.
Eight thousand feet of pipe.
Right, of, of the twenty thousand. But, but part of that, about three thousand of that is in, is in kind of rocky terrain, and he's kind of skipped over some of those areas, and those areas are going to be slower. He's not going to be able to make the progress in those areas that he has in the others.
And what kind of provision is in the contract? Remind me where he hits those rocks.
There is, there's a pay item for the rock excavation that occurs that's defined as rock excavation, which is basically anything he can't rip, okay? If he's got to come in there and blast it or hammer it, you know, and we have CQA firm there witness it to confirm that it's rock in the amount that he's getting paid for. And that was roughly about, I think we figured about thirty or forty percent of the job may be rock, just because our experience in the area, knowing, knowing the terrain. So it looks like we'll be a little bit under that. So, you know, that, that's just a straight pay item, that, that'll be an item that we don't use all of that in the contract.
So he doesn't have, he does or does not have a right to ask for extra days because of the rock?
No, sir.
Okay.
Follow-up question, Mayor. Go back to the numbers again, because you indicated that we would have something in front of us. We don't have any numbers in front of us, okay?
Right.
So once again, do the numbers a little bit slower.
Okay, well, these are estimates, you know.
That's all I want to see.
And this is just to kind of try to compare apples to apples, and this is the best I can do. But he's got, the, the cost of the equipment alone and his subcontractors that he has to have to perform the repairs is eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay.
Okay, now, I took that number in knowing the work and knowing the risk associated with the work and... the work and everything else. What I said was, you're going to have, you're going to have some labor associated with that, which would be several thousand more dollars. You're going to have mobilization if you had to hire anyone else to come in here and do the work. And then you're going to have anyone else to come in here. They're not going to come in and do it for cost and labor. They're going to make 10 or $15,000 off of it or they're not going to come do it right now. You just can't get, you, folks are, folks have plenty to do. They're not going to come in here and do the work for nothing. So I rounded it, just rough numbers, added all that together and said, you're probably going to be in the 25 or $30,000 range to get the project done if you don't use this contractor.
Follow-up question, Your Honor. First of all, I do think in threes, okay? I figured that 11, 830 plus several thousand for mobilization, et cetera, et cetera. You're being conservative at 25,000, pretty much, probably. You're pretty much being conservative.
Yeah.
This is not our first day at this issue, okay? And we've seen, what's the name of the company again?
The Terry's Plumbing.
Terry's, that's right. I knew it was some name.
Right.
And I've been seeing them on 52 and down Stony Gap Road forever. Almost ran into one of them literally because he did a U-turn in the middle of the road on Stony Gap Road about three weeks ago. It isn't our first day dealing with them because we've known they've been dragging. Okay? And it isn't our first day, nor is it yours, or should it have been theirs about rock? About, you admitted that. I mean, this, our terrain is rock.
Right.
I am, I am very upset that it's coming to us personally wanting a little bit of adjustment and all this extension because our, you know, we're already past the date.
Right.
And I look at my fellow council members and say, where did we mess up to begin with when we awarded this bid? Because we should have been, we, staff included, in my opinion, should have been more on task about being able to follow through with recommendations and that kind of thing. So we're going to have to eat the bullet. And personally, I hate the idea of that. But I was skeptical to begin with and I'm very much skeptical now because we're talking about, you know, even if it costs us $25,000, he's already at $1,000 a day liquidation, I mean, liquidated damages per day.
Right.
I mean, we're already at, today's the sixth, we're already at, you know, $20,000.
That's right. And there's, I mean, I'm, he's got a lot of work left.
Oh, it's very imminent. He's got a lot of work left.
And, you know, it's, this project has been, it's been, y'all heard, it's been tough from the beginning. They were, in talking with them, I think they, they got too much work at one time and they've not been able to put the people on it that they should have put on it at the beginning. I think the project manager has been overwhelmed with the number of projects they've got and being spread thin and, you know, he hadn't had the attention to the detail that, you know, we like to see on a project. I will say one thing, the, so far, the work that we're seeing in the field has been, it's been okay. I mean, it's been solid. It didn't appear like they're trying to cut a lot of corners. They come behind themselves pretty regular and clean things up and dress things up and grass it. They hadn't been, you know, you know, they hadn't tried to change order you every chance you got over any little deal. They've just gone to work and went to work on it, you know. They, they just hadn't had the people on it that they should have had on it from the beginning.
That's the problem. They have not had, they have not had the people on our job.
Well, we had the concerns early was because of the very low bid.
Right.
That's exactly.
But they got a glowing recommendation on everybody we checked.
I may be caused personally.
Yeah, so I know, I know everybody gave them a good recommendation. I, I do agree that, you know, they're, they should have put more people who, but you're right, they're probably snowed under right now. I have no problem with some adjustment because I think that we're going to end up doing it one way or the other. And it is so hard to go through a liquidated damages claims that if we can settle that and show good faith now, I think it would help us some later on. Now, what's your thoughts on that?
I, I agree with you. And you really, it's almost like you, with the liquidated damages that the contract has in it and the fact that he knows that he's behind and he knows he's got, he's facing him, he's making you a deal.
He's what?
He's kind of making you a deal. I mean, somewhat because he knows he needs to, he knows he needs those days. And he knows that y'all can give those up without it costing you a lot, but it's going to help him. He's getting a deal.
He's getting a deal, right.
But, but you're getting a pretty good deal. You're getting a savings on what it would take you to come back and get that, to get that done.
This is not part of the contract. Just, just to make sure everyone understands that.
Yes.
I mean, what the mayor said about.
Yes, this is additional work outside the contract.
We got it. We realized there was a problem with existing infrastructure. So it's in, yeah, it absolutely is in his best interest, but this is a project where we haven't had a change order, any request. It's work we're going to have to have done at some point. So the negotiation is, if we want this contract to do it, what's the fair value in exchange for existing penalty days? But it is, it is going to need to be done by somebody at some point. He's, he being Terry's Plumbing is there right now. So what's the fair exchange?
But to that point, is he going to put more people on the project? If he maintains the same number he's done now, obviously he goes, for each day he goes forward, he takes two or three backwards.
That's, that's right.
In my mind, I've got to have a guarantee from him is that we're going to put people on this project.
How much money are we withholding before he gets final payment?
Well, we've got retainage of 10%, but that's based on the amount that he's completed. So he's got, I mean, he hasn't been paid more than what he's completed. And then we've got retainage of 10% on that.
And the total contract was?
A million 694, I think is.
1.46. So we will hold about 160?
At, when he's completely finished with work.
Yes, sir.
So if you, if we did 37 days or whatever, that would extend it to, you said like Thanksgiving? And you're saying he needs 60 to 90 days from now?
Yes, sir.
So that's like early January, early February? So he's still going to be 45 to?
Yeah, we're still going to be looking at liquidated damages. It's just, I think if we show a good faith effort though to work with him, it will sure help us if we end up in court.
It's going to be 50, 60, 70,000 dollars still.
Oh, yeah. It's still going to be significant.
We were not going to pay that right upfront.
Okay. Yeah, but if you don't put the, the right people on the job, it's just going to continue to stall out.
I mean, you're exactly right. And, and we, we've asked for this numerous times. I mean, I, I can't even question, I mean, can't even remember how many times we asked them, when are you going to put more people on? And it took forever to get the second crew. And for a while, he's had a third crew. And then I, I mean, it's like these guys are snake bit right now. One of his superintendents killed himself, was it last week?
Oh, six ago.
Yeah. I mean, and, and so they've had, they had that to deal with on top of everything else they're dealing with. I mean, you know, it's just a, it, he's, so that third crew was kind of handicapped somewhat there. And, but, you know, they, they realized that they know they're out of, they know they're in a mess. That's the reason they're asking for these, that's the reason they're, they're willing to come in and do that and get the days. But I don't know that, you know, in the, I don't know that we can get the guarantee in the contract. And, I mean, you know, to get, you know, we've got the contract, we got the liquidated damages and it's costing him every day that goes by. So if I'm, if I'm in their shoes, I'm, I'm doing everything I can to find a way to get it done. And we've indicated nothing to the fact that all liquidated damages were not being enforced.
As they, if, if council approves this, we need to make sure in the change order that we say nothing about forgiving unliquidated damages.
Certainly.
Okay. Counsel, what's your wishes? I'm sorry, Michael.
Say real quickly, and I can, I can vouch for Brent, Darren, landfill staff, rest of public works staff that's been involved, that we, we've seen this coming for a while and they have done all they could in terms of encouragement and reminders and providing strongly worded correspondence to formalize the fact that we see where this is heading. And it's to the point where, you know, we can only do so much. They're the contractor, they're responsible. We do have a contract. There are repercussions and consequences. They have done a very good job of trying to avoid this entire situation, not as it relates to the, the probably want to fix with the leachate sale, but the fact that they're behind, public, public works and Brent and his firm have been on it from the beginning. And there's only so much we can do. And at some point, it's just the contractor's company and their decisions.
Counsel, what's your wishes?
One other thing, is there anything else we need to know that could come up at any point in time over the next 90 days that would surprise us?
Yes, potentially there is.
Specifically, what would that be?
There is an abandoned well that's not far from the pipeline. And it was, it's an abandoned well that was not recorded. It was, it's not in records. It was put in prior to any records being available. But that well is in close proximity to the force main.
Oh, my.
It just means we have an issue there that we, it's going to have to get worked out. And I don't know how it's going to get worked out yet. I don't know, the well, I don't even know if it's up to current standards and if it's even allowed to be a drinking water well right now. Those are things that we're trying to figure out right now. That is the only item I know of that could be an issue. And I, I don't have, I don't have the answers yet on that.
As soon as you get them, would you?
Certainly.
Write that to Darren so he can let us know as soon as possible.
Certainly, yes, sir.
We've been through this and been through this and been through this. And it's, we're to, I can't speak for my fellow council members, but from my perspective, it's, it's been a disaster. And, you know, you can't start throwing blame around. What is, is what is. We can't fix what's back there. We've got to go from this point forward, be totally upfront and proactive as we look at everything about this project from here on out, from whether we give him this or he's asking us for this. I don't feel bad about saying, hey, if we're willing to give it, give us something in return that we haven't had thus far. And that is get the people on the job.
Right.
Further questions?
Follow-up. This abandoned well, is it in right of way? Is it on our?
It's about nine feet from the right of way.
Can't you fill it up with concrete and be done with it?
Well, I'm just going to say, we don't have all the answers yet.
But, right.
It is abandoned and it's not an active well?
Well, it's not, it's not being used at this time. No, no, sir. It's not a drinking water well that's being used.
Further questions, counsel? What's your wishes?
I like the, I like the mediated of 37 versus the 44 as requested. I'm trying to formulate something right now. But before I do that, I, I want us to have a date. If I, if I put anything in the form of a motion, I want a date on there. I think that I, I have to have a date on there.
What kind of date you're talking?
Well, if we're talking 60 to 90 days from today, are we talking 60, 90 days from the original October 12th? What are we talking?
From today.
From today.
I think that he's, and there again, he could come in, if he finishes up one of these projects that has got him strung out right now, and say he's got two crews on it and he puts them on this project, he can make some headway. He could knock, he could really knock out most of the work in 30 days. But that hadn't happened. And, and I don't, I hadn't seen it happen. So we're kind of basing on, best we can, how he's been operating, which is a couple of crews. And if he stays at that pace, he's got, he's got a lot of work left for two crews to get done. So, you know, that's the reason I can't tell you, hey, he'll have it done on such and such date because I don't know what type of effort he's going to put on it.
Well, guys, if we look at 90 days, we're looking at February.
What kind of date, what are you, what do you want to put a date on, on this part of the work? Because you already got dates on the original contract and I don't think you should do anything to change that. You've got a contract that already exists.
Right.
All we're asking for, all you're, you're asking for is that we give him 37 days from October 12th.
Correct.
Yes.
That's how the contract, right.
That we extend that to 37 days past October 12th.
A motion by Councilmember Bramlett to offer 37 days from October 12th in exchange for doing the work that needs to be done on the leachate pond.
Yes, sir.
Well, have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, May Whitley, excuse me. Further discussion? Hearing none, I entertain a vote. I entertain a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries six one. Number 11, policy for pre-qualification of bidders for construction contracts. Do you have that in your agenda tonight, counsel? We have never done this before and we needed to adopt a policy for this process. Anyone have any questions on that policy?
I'm glad we got one.
Summarize it? Yeah. Summarize it, yes. It's a process of how they pre-qualify bidders. And there's also flaws in there, how they, how they feel about that also. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 12, presentation of the updated facilities used policy. Ms. Kaiser, you want to come forward or whoever's handling this? Because I have questions. Sorry.
We're not going to say anything.
Let the mayor ask them.
Well, I sincerely hope I have answers.
I just want to go, go to your highlighted section on the Central Avenue, uh, Central Element.
Are you talking about page eight fees? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm sorry.
Page eight, the fees?
Let me get to it. Hold on.
Okay.
That's exactly what I want. All right. I see where you.
Where are we? Page?
Page eight.
Okay.
I see where you have a price from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. But then you also have a price from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. If somebody, one of you, mayor, wanted it all day, would they pay both of those or what would they pay?
Currently, yes.
I'm, I'm sorry. I disagree totally with that.
Okay.
I think, I, I think our prices need to be a little bit more reasonable or we're going to scare people off. And the whole thing behind this is we want people to use this facility.
Right. So the, the primary use is going to be for performing arts. That's all that's allowed to be done. So it's not like there's going to be birthday parties and, and just commu, you know, general family events and things like that there. So the people that are going to be using it, you know, are, it's not for that purpose. And there are the long-term rentals at the bottom for what most likely will be used most often. But if, you know, if council has recommendations, we're certainly here.
Since you brought up long-term rental, that's another question.
Okay.
Say somebody comes in and they're going to have something on consecutive weekends during the week when the building sits empty, but their equipment is in there, are they charged?
Yes.
Most of the time, if they have consecutive weekends, they're going to be practicing on that week in between. So it's not like it's empty.
I actually, and I actually see possibly a group or two, we got in the county, city and county, that may want it for as much as three weeks. And I, I have a little concern about the, the cost, especially those long events.
Well, they're also charging ticket prices for their events.
If you've got, if you've got U-Ware players in there that they give productions over two or three weekends, they'd be paying, what, $300 a day?
We're, we're going to outprice ourselves and that's the reason.
Do that.
No, that is the reason we wanted to be able to outfit the auditorium was to bring arts downtown. And we've got to realize who those arts are, okay? And I agree with Chris and with the mayor. I don't want it to be, and yeah, they do have ticket prices, but you know what? It costs whatever organization it is to produce, to get the rights to do it. So that's just an offset. So I, I don't even look at what it's costing to get there. What I really want us to look at is I want it to be something that is reasonable enough, okay, that if any art group wanted to, for-profit or nonprofit. And maybe we need to look at that as well, okay?
There are, there are cost.
Oh, that's right. There are classes, the class of B of the general.
Now, Deb, I'm sorry.
And I may have missed it. How did you come up with the pricing? Was that, what were you basing that on?
So there were some comparable, there's not really anything comparable to ours. It's much smaller. much smaller than any comparable municipal-owned facilities that, that we could compare to. At the very end of this agenda item, there's the Aggressivic Center prices. And speaking to what you were saying, Martha Sue, a lot of these talent company, all of them, they're using the Aggressivic Center, which is outrageously more expensive than what we have, especially considering the capacity they need. So that's where the prices came from, in comparison to Aggressivic Center, other places, municipalities like Ashford that has a Sunset Theater.
Right.
Looking at their prices, their amenities versus ours, and trying to come to some, some middle ground there. If we want to just, you know, have low prices, then we'll have low prices. And, but, but that's where the numbers came from, was comparisons between other municipal county-owned.
And Lindsay's right. We're just, we're providing this as a starter. This is not our typical business. We're not traditionally in the auditorium rental business. So looking at what's around us, this is a starter. If council does want to increase the fees, reduce the fees, and, you know, knowing that we're subsidizing at, to some degree, then that's, that's up to council. We're just putting it in a framework to get that in place. And from there, you know, we, the fees can be changed or altered, but we've got, we've got to have a starter for discussion and see what our policies would look like and how it would work. And that, that's where we are now.
So, so one of the statements on, in the policy regarding central school, you say "use of the central school auditorium is limited to performing arts purposes only." So like, if we got a church or somebody that want to, you rent this facility for church service or something for some odd reason, you know, are we excluding them?
We went to-
We had one.
I know, we had one.
We actually went to the, the owners of the property, and they agreed to let that happen. But the contract does say performing arts. But remember, we went to them and they approved the church.
If somebody came to us for something like what you're talking about, if, if council said, yes, we would, we want to allow this church, or something outside of performing arts, I think council could approve, but we would need to go back to the Central School LLC folks, because that's who our agreement is with.
And it does say, it, it, the agreement with the owners does say performing arts only.
I'd like to address that. Unless, unless I have a different, unless I have the wrong view of what that auditorium is, performing arts are really not the best use of that place. Best use is education. Suppose we have a great lecturer coming in, why would we not allow that in an auditorium?
And I agree totally. I agree totally. And I don't think the Central School LLC's going to have a problem with it either.
Phil, I wouldn't think, but I just noticed that performing arts restriction.
Right. That's just what's in their contract.
I, I think we need to rework this thing before we take any action on it.
I, I think we need a daily charge for the entire day. And we also need to figure out some kind of a weekly charge when it may sit vacant for, for long periods of time. And I think we need to keep in mind, it's got to be reasonable, or we're not going to have anybody use it. So I, if council's okay, or unless you have suggestions, I think we should send it back to staff to rework and bring something back to us.
Well, obviously, we've got some other concerns.
Sure, sure.
Because a little over a year ago, we went from, and I, I know we done made some investments at the Waddell Center, you know, but a little over a year ago, we went from $200 to $250.
At the Waddell Center?
Yes. But now we're talking about on top of the $250, and a $75 cleaning fee, and then a $75 refundable deposit, you know. To me, I don't know, I, the Waddell Center is about the only government facility that's utilized every weekend, almost every day of the year. And I think we need to reconsider that as well, because that'll put a major hardship on a lot of people that utilize that facility.
What is it currently?
$250. And that includes the cleaning fee.
That is, that is the same. It stayed the same. It was only adding that refundable cleaning.
About this right here, you got a $75-
Then that needs to be rewarded, but the 75 is included in the $250. That, we didn't change any fees for recreation and parks. The only thing that was added was those cleaning fees. And that's because I have walked in weekend after weekend to both the Nivens Center to a mess. We're not getting keys back in a timely manner either. So it's, that's just to get those things cleaned up and tightened up a little bit, to take care of our facilities.
Okay, the cleaning crew at the Waddell Center come in at the end of each?
This is Nivens.
Okay, all right.
Yes. But for both, we give a key out to Waddell. So to get those back in a timely manner, that's what that security deposit is for.
A refundable deposit.
It's refundable. And also, we're having problems of people like, coming in and just canceling their deposit at the last minute, canceling their reservation. They get all but $5 back.
Really?
They can cancel the day before the rental and get all but $5 of their rental fee that they paid back.
Well, if I may, first of all, first of all, I'd like to say thank you. Appreciate what you've done. Obviously, this is bigger than we all thought it was going to be. And there's some things, like you just mentioned, that really need to be addressed. It's not a five-minute, 10-minute cancellation. You need 24 hours, 48 hours, because you can turn it back around. If we're not giving ourselves that time to do that, then we're shooting ourselves in the foot. And I think you, I think we have a case about the cleanup. And if it's not in that rental price, and it's in the recoverable deposit, 75 and 75, if you clean it, you get your deposit back. That's the biggest thing you're going to run into. And so it could be worded a little bit differently in that if they mess it up, be it me, you, or anybody else, we have to be held accountable. We're providing these facilities. And they're excellent facilities. We're upgrading these facilities, and therefore, they need to be taken care of. And we all have to be responsible for what we're providing and what this great community is providing for all of us. And, you know, I don't want us to get gun-shod on some things, but where we have to put the teeth, let's put the teeth in where we can be, look, that's not the right word, is. When they can look at it and say, they're trying to help us, that's the message that I want to get across, is that we're here for you, and we want to help you, want to give you the best facilities that we can do. But at the same time, with the fair price that we give, we're asking you for something in return as well. We just can't give, 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 give. There's got to be some responsibility built back on the other end.
And the policy, especially for the auditorium, and really all of it, is written to protect both the renter and us, and our facilities, because it's important to, to maintain them, so.
Your question to Michael. Michael, have we started paying the monthly fee?
Yes.
And I think we've got, we of a council have got to take that in consideration. That, and have we been paying it for about 18 months?
No, probably ballpark, it would be Christmas, first of the year last year.
So we've been paying it for about a year?
Close to it.
A thousand, right? A thousand dollars?
Yeah. So, you know-
Plus utility.
Right, that's right. Plus you-
Plus, plus electric. I don't think water is-
Well, plus, plus electric. So we got to realize that, I mean, I'm glad we are where we are. But in my mind, it's going to cost that blanket amount for us to outfit it. We know that. We'll, we're eating that. I would, I personally would love to be able to have something in that auditorium at least every weekend, and have it reasonable enough to be able to have that, but yet enough to cover what our monthly expense is.
I don't, I don't think you'll ever cover your monthly expense. I think that's going to be just something we're going to have to give to the performing arts, unless, unless it does better than I expect it's going to do. Because I think we're going to have to keep the prices reasonable, or we're going to struggle to get anybody in.
That's, that's the big thing. We can't outprice ourselves.
It's not a matter of kind, it's a matter of amount. It's just a matter of adapt, of changing these things. We, we all agree, you got to clean and all of that, but it just, I just think we need to rework the amounts.
Well, I can tell you just that I'm getting calls and emails on a daily basis-
On the day, I'm sure.
About this property.
I'm sure.
So it's going to also take a lot of staff time to manage.
Miss counsel?
Probably a lot more than what you guys might realize.
About how many, how many people will it accommodate, Deena?
It's right around 225 to 30.
There are 226 seats in the hospital.
Question. How far away are we on completing the upgrades?
I would envision, we're going to be talking probably after the first of the year, because they had to order all that equipment, and then they're going to be putting it in. I'm going to say, we're probably looking at least February or more.
The group out of Concord Music and Roar or something like that?
Yeah, Music and Roar got to bid, yes.
They've already began, though, so.
Wow.
Well, I'm just thinking. I, I support, as many of you do, local arts. Every time there is somebody doing something, I'm there. I think that if we get it ready, that we will have it, that Talent Company will use it, the Yori Players will use it, Arts Council will use it. I think, and if you're getting calls, I think those people are ready for it. I think that, or maybe I'm being too positive, I truly believe that we'll have something in there pretty much every weekend.
And we'll have, we'll have an opportunity, as we see how things are going, to adjust regulations, fees, and whatnot. Again, theaters aren't typically a municipal activity, and it's sure not one we've been in before. So we're just trying to set the framework. And if council tells us to go back and look at the cost and, and want to adjust it so that, you know, we know we're probably not making back full cost, we can come back with different numbers in there. That's, that's what council's decision is. And if we get into it, and we see there's a huge demand, and we want to make some adjustments, or, or we're still pricing ourselves too high, we can, we can adjust as we go along. We just don't really-
Don't know.
Don't, don't know. Because it's just not our typical line of work.
I'd be curious to know on staffing. I mean, you know, because we're, a lot more is going back to parks and rent. I mean, more so than we've had in the past. So I'm very interested to know how much time and maintenance this is going to take from the staff.
Sure.
So this is different. This is something new we've added. We've added some other activities and events to this department. And so, you know, don't want to wear everybody down so thin that, you know. So I, I do think that needs to be considered. I know we're trying to rent this, but we also have to be reasonable in terms of our staff. So.
Counsel, I agree. We'll send it back to staff, let them bring something back to us.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
I wanted to highlight one more thing while I'm, while I'm here. The very last item is the marketing flyer. For the outfit, we are trying to cover some of that cost by issuing seat sponsorships.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So the very last item is the marketing flyer. For those seat sponsorships, there are 226 seats to sell, 100 each. And then each one will be marked with a brass plaque who it was given by. So we are going to be doing that initiative, passing it along to all the, the Talent Company, the Yori Players, some of the Historical Society folks, and anybody that you all would like. I'll email the, the electronic version to you all as well, if you know people that might be interested. But, you know, we have the potential to raise over $20,000 with that initiative to help cover some of those costs.
You know, we have that.
Our website, can that be on the city's website?
I can put that there, yes.
And on Facebook?
Yes.
I do like your pre and post-inspection. That's a big plus to this.
Well, if we're going to, and put that fee in there, then we need to have that in place, so that, that both staff and renter are looking, both before and after.
But I'll say, Lindsay, I still have the old form, okay? I still have the first form. This is a form that was for these seats, okay?
Yes.
So I still have the old form.
Okay.
Have we gotten any at all?
No, we had not started the initiative.
Because we haven't actually advertised it. We were waiting.
Well, I know, but I, I still have that old one to do, okay?
Okay, thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Number 13.
Just a moment.
He's giving you the first $100. I'll take it.
$100, he would be right, it would be a lot more than $100.
How many did you?
10.
Did you do 10?
Did 10.
Bless him.
Thank you.
He's going to put our names up there.
One of each, one for each of us.
Are you doing that?
One for each of you. Two, two for you.
Number 13, update on the Highway 52 wastewater treatment plant freight elevator. We do not have anybody here tonight to update you on that, because the numbers did not come in yet. You saw in the agenda what Mr. Leonis and our architect have projected. We did not anticipate this, because that was a certified elevator, and we didn't expect that the state was going to come in and say, you're going to upgrade that elevator. And I can tell you, this same thing may be hitting us at the police building, too. They told us, we've run into the same thing down there. Even though they're, got certifications, we've been told that we're probably going to have to upgrade. So we don't know to what extent down there, and we don't know to what extent here. But both of those will be unexpected.
Do you have to have an elevator? I know you do up at, up there, but it's, just sort of-
For handicap accessibility, you'll have to have it at the-
You couldn't put it all on the first floor.
No.
Candy cap, excuse me.
If it was, if we were not remodeling the drive, we probably could.
Right.
But since we're remodeling the building, we have to bring it up code. Number 14, discuss parking regulation in vicinity of South Fourth and East Main Streets. Counsel had some concerns about some signs that got put up by ERA on Fourth Street. Those have been removed, and that issue has been resolved. Mr. Aldrich brought up that we want to consider marking it. And Michael gave you a brief diagram of what it would look like, basically marked. That's totally up to council's wishes, where they want to do that or not. I think the diagonal parking, I'm, I'm sorry, I disagree with that, because I think you're really hurting the Napa autos if you make that a one-way street. So I think parking, if you want to mark the other parking spaces, is no problem. But I don't think we should consider diagonal.
Right, we don't want to do any-
I think we'll leave it like it is for a while.
Right now, see how it goes. I, I agree, I agree. Okay. All right, moving on. Number 15, consideration of special event permit application for the downtown Christmas parade.
May approval?
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 16, consideration of a special event permit for Will's Place Community Open House. Allison, you want to speak?
Um, I can.
Of course.
Of course. I hope to see all of you there. If you can make it, we are finally opening Will's Place, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, serving the community of Saline County, helping individuals and families find treatment from substance abuse and addiction. We're, we're just inviting everyone to, to our open house to see who we are, what we do, where we're at, so they can be educated and speak about it. Everyone in the community is invited. We just hope, you know, people will become, you know, a part of the community to know what recovery is about, instead of just addiction. So when you hear of someone that needs help finding a rehab, or detox, or sober living, or if they're in recovery, finding a job, or getting assistance legally, anything like that, you can send them to Will's Place, and we will do our best to help them.
How are you coming on the possibility of opening your own sober living at some point?
We're about $800,000 away. So it'll, it'll happen, it'll happen. But we're hoping that this will at least serve the immediate need in Saline County, because it's a huge problem, whether you're aware of it or not. And so we're hoping people will see what we do. A lot of the grants we're applying for, you have to be open for at least five years. So this gets us open to start applying, because nobody wants to give you money, and then, you know, it not follow through. But we're really confident that we will eventually get there. But that's probably about two years away, we're kind of thinking.
And what exactly are you going to be doing, since you want to close the street? What are you wanting to do?
Um, well, our, the space we are in is about 1,000 square feet. We're expecting more people than that can hold. So we, Greens Catering is coming. They're setting up a food truck to serve everyone. So we just need really a space to put the food, the chairs, tables, things like that.
Basically, the only business you're going to affect is off the square. Have you told them and talked to them about this?
I did, and I got all of their approvals, that everyone was in favor of that whole street, so.
Yeah, your honor, I, I spoke with Allison probably two weeks ago, and, and-
Oh, yeah, you did. Martha Sue helped me.
Well, and I just basically said she probably needed to talk to, to all the folks downtown, particularly because of the time. And we talked about the entrance and the exit to the courthouse being left open, because it might be, in fact, that folks who come to this may want to go in and park behind the courthouse. So I, I've got the diagram open here in front of me, where you're wanting to close the street. We, you and I talked about basically in front of the courthouse, is that right?
That, yeah, that's it. It's from the crosswalk until the entrance of the courthouse. It's not actually down, it wouldn't block off the square. It would just be right in front. So people can, we're hiring, we talked to the police department, they're going to put, or we're hiring officers to direct traffic around.
So King Avenue, where you go down to the-
That is open.
That's open. So we close from right there, north of there, just to the entrance of the courthouse.
Correct.
It's probably two buildings full.
Yeah.
So what are the people that turn south from the square? So what about people that turn south from the square? It has to go around the courthouse to get out.
Yep.
I move approval.
I do, thanks.
Motion by Councilmember Ram, second. By Councilmember Hall, further discussion?
I don't know if this, with what you're doing, if this is the right time to where you would have something, letting the people that come know what's going to happen down on First Street, if there's a rendering.
Yeah, absolutely. We will have all of that kind of up. Right now, any money that has been donated is staying in that fund, and anything that we have printed gives you a choice to donate to the building fund, or donate to our Recovery Resource Center, which is at 132 South Second, so.
Further questions? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, and I hope to see as many of you as possible there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider establishing filing fees for the 2018 city elections, and your agenda is what they have been for many years. Does council want to change that, or adopt the same thing?
To adopt.
Motion by Councilmember Dry to approve them as they have been.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion?
I don't know if this, with what you're doing, if this is the right time to where you would have something, letting the people that come know what's going to happen down on First Street, if there's a rendering.
Yeah, absolutely. We will have all of that kind of up. Right now, any money that has been donated is staying in that fund, and anything that we have printed gives you a choice to donate to the building fund, or donate to our Recovery Resource Center, which is at 132 South Second, so.
Further questions? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Backing up to the Will's Place, she had asked that the fee be waived.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And I'm sorry, I did not see DeVore. Is he here?
He called last night, called about 10 o'clock, and said he had to attend something with his job up in the mountains, and he won't be back in town till Tuesday evening. I told him, well, obviously, I seen the information in the packet. He did indicate to me that when he got back, that he would speak with the people at the Tire Place, as well as Super 10, and see if they could, see if they would have any problems with this, and block it off possibly where people could still enter East Main and go into the Tire Place, put the barricades.
What was the date on that, mister?
This Saturday.
Yeah, this Saturday, October.
We need to reconsider then. Counsel, this is a special event permit application by DeVore Ponds, and it's foreclosing Moss Springs.
I think.
Down to the First Street, correct?
I think so.
Hold on, I got to wait.
Freeman, Freeman.
It's down to Freeman. Apparently, they're going to use the field in back of Super 10.
Open field, yeah.
Apparently, you got a lot of motorcycle riders coming in from out of town, and.
Counsel, what's your wishes?
I move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second. By Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. So we approved the event permit to close the street, that's what he requested.
Yes.
Okay. Number nineteen, consider participation in the Hospice Festival of Tree. This is the same thing we've been doing every year. Council, so moves it'll be 3750. Each individual council member would write that check to Hospice. I have a motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number twenty, consider attendance at Stan County Cog Meeting and Locusts on Tuesday, November 28th. I'm good, Mike.
As far as.
Looks like everybody.
All right, if everyone will, I mean, the usual routine is to meet in the City Hall parking lot about 6:00. None of them meeting, and we'll carpool out there.
Where's it going to be out there? I don't know that it's been announced. The last couple I've been at was actually at the City Hall, but we've also been to the church on 200, so I don't know.
This is going to be at that community.
Yeah, the community building there, as soon as you enter in, the park beside the school, little building there on the left.
Mr. Ferris, I'll be meeting you.
I'll meet you there.
Number 21, monthly schedule for continuing education workshops. This is information from planning. Anyone have any questions off planning for that? Thank you to the staff for doing this.
Okay, so we see, we're on there, guys. Okay, so we're making a commitment to, I mean, those are not our meeting dates, that's just other stuff, right, Kevin?
Yeah, we were trying to find a date, a regular date, as best as possible, that would work for all the different boards. I understand that not everybody's going to be able to make it to every one of these, but I think it'll be useful. They're about anywhere between 45 minutes, an hour, and 15 minutes on the presentations, and we will have a little bit of time afterwards to talk about it. I think it'd be good for all the boards to be there together, all the relevant boards, and we'll have a, we'll have a link to the videos afterwards if you miss it. So don't feel like if you've got something else going on, you can't make one of them, that it's the end of the world.
I encourage you to send out a reminder about a week.
We will. We'll be doing one tomorrow. I wanted to wait till you guys heard this first. The next one's coming up, first one's coming up next Tuesday.
Right.
What time is it?
There's no time on here. At 6:00 in the morning. Will you do one thing for us? Will you go back tonight or tomorrow and extract just that page two, and send it out just that page two in an email? I think if everybody's got just that and an email, then you've already printed it off. But I, you know, we're making a commitment to be in there, and that's big time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Number two, reminder, city will hold its Arbor Day tree planting ceremony on Friday, November 17th. I know the biggest majority council will be at NLC that day. Number 23, I'm going to come back to in just a minute, go around the table, but a couple things. Number one, we've been meeting with First Tron in regards to, and that's our financial consultant, if you remember, to schedule our next meeting. We're not wanting to schedule that till we get the audit. But question of council is, do you want to have a special meeting in December to do that if the audit comes in? Or do you want to just include First Tron in our strategic planning workshop that we do in January for budget every year? What's council's preference?
I'd rather do it upfront before then.
We still can't set a date, because we don't know when the audit's going to get back. It may be January regardless.
If it comes early, I'd rather go ahead and have that information upfront.
I'd rather do it in January.
I think it depends on when the audit comes back myself, if.
That's a lot of stuff to digest. So if we get it early, we at least have.
All right, we'll, we'll just wait and see what the audit comes back. If it comes back mid-December, we're obviously going to go to January.
Right.
So we'll see how, how it comes, because we don't. Are you saying it's going to make it in December?
It's moving along.
Well, you want to put your money on it?
You'll put your salary.
Coming around, Mr. Ferris.
I don't have it there.
Mr. Townsend.
Just a little preliminary announcement. I think it's next Tuesday. Stanley Community College will be rolling out of plans to start some courses at the Nivens Center and the Waddell Center, where people can take online courses toward a business degree. So I think that's a good thing, that'll support both of those facilities. They are talking about Nivens Center, right? Okay, I want to make sure I wasn't speaking out. It's going to be a community meeting, that I'm, I'm having a community meeting for some of my constituents next Tuesday, and I think they plan on being there next Tuesday and just announce it to the community.
Good going.
And the courses are supposed to start in February, you know, registration starting in January. That's all.
Mr. Hughes?
No comments.
Mr. Aldridge? Going back to NLC real quickly. Aldridge, you're going? Who's all going to NLC?
I was supposed to, and I got work conflicts, so.
Dexter?
I just, yeah.
I don't know.
But I think we need to look at specific, because there's so much going on. I don't know who's reg, who's registered.
I'm registered.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't recall, because that was something that Christina had handled and been discussing on some of the changes, so off the top of my head, I just don't know.
Okay.
I think you're registered.
I'm registered.
Should I go to my place?
We'll need to go back and look. But I just wanted to let you, let everybody know, so you can make arrangements of that, because I know if you're going to call, carpool, or what. I am not going, so I just want to make sure.
I think I'm registered, I think.
See.
You're registered.
Martha Sue's got one.
Martha Sue's registered, Dexter's registered. We need to check on you. I thought you were, too.
Well, and I asked, I sent a message, I sent an email, if we're going to talk about NLC for me, and I sent a message to Michael that we needed to look at this. And we need to look at it tonight, because I hadn't got, I mean, you know, normally, if you go, you just go and stay, and you, you get stuck there. There are so many things going on at different times.
It was confusing. I have no clue what I'm about to attend.
Well, see, and I looked at it, there are, and I think that's something we really need to, and that's the reason I asked if somebody print off something, because on Wednesday, there's just sessions, there's committee meetings, there's pre-sessions and that kind of thing. The actual opening session, if I read it correctly, is not until Thursday afternoon at 1:30. So, and then there is a North Carolina reception for North Carolina folks that evening. So I, I really want us to look at that, because I think we need to carpool over. I mean, mainly, I mean, if we're going to go. I mean, parking would be atrocious. But, and maybe I was remiss in not printing things off and having it ready for folks, but I was hoping that somebody would have that tonight, so we could look at it.
Michael, will you send that out to council, so they can look at that and decide what they want to do? Because we will not meet again before then.
Well, I know.
Sherrill sent out the agenda for reading, and then, since not everyone remembers who's attending, the list of those that have signed up.
And then Sunday, Friday night is the downtown Christmas.
That's right.
We're all aware of that, so.
I did email it to you, didn't I, Michael? I think I did.
I may have overlooked that part about burning off the agenda, so I remember an email about it, but.
But I think if we know who's going, I guess those of us who are going can at least get together, figure out when.